Okay, so the meeting is called to order at 6 o'clock. And we have one agenda amendment that we're going to add by talk with your talk. Any other agenda amendments?
We also want to make sure we talk about the VHI, do a proxy vote at the same point. So it would fall under the superintendent's report.
Okay, great.
To have a Friday meeting.
Okay. We have some lovely guests tonight. Thank you. Incredibly important guests. Thank you. We're going to get to that later though, because our next item on our agenda is correspondence for future and public comments. I think we can keep going if that's okay with you all. Okay, so anyone's welcome at any time, by the way. Come and join us for a meeting and give us comments. Approval of the August 8th board minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 8th, you said?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, a little discussion. There are a couple of things that we need to change, like some dates of meetings and stuff like that. Tamara, but I can get with you on that if that's okay. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Great, the pass, the minutes passed. Thank you. They were really thorough minutes. Thank you. And what else? Okay, so we're ready to move on to fiscal and HR report.
Okay. So we received a financial report through August 31st, 2018. I'm just going to highlight a few changes that I think are relevant. One of the biggest ones is the transportation line on your revenue page, which is the top page. You'll notice about a third of the way down, your transportation reimbursement in the first column, we had budgeted about $138,000. And then if you look over under projected on the third column over, in this one, you'll see it's been zeroed out. And then consequently, if you look on, in the expenditures, you'll notice I'm just netting that revenue out under the expenditures under transportation, which is on page eight. You'll see that what's being budgeted was $264,000 and some change, and then the estimated is about half that. The AOE has requested that we are now netting that revenue, which is being received at the SU level. And we used to be able to still reflect it as a revenue, but they are announcing I guess we can't do that anymore. So I'm netting it from your expense. So next year, we won't even budget it that way if that's how we're operating. So that's a large change, because what it does is it shows that your budget's being significantly under expended as your bottom line. So we'll just have to remember that that's part of that. Other than that, I've met with Justina and Dina and worked through all the staff and salary changes, benefit changes, added district placements, contracted services, those kinds of things. We've updated all of those lines throughout. Nothing too unusual to report. The other thing I wanted to mention is you'll notice that the Medicaid revenue on the front page, what's anticipated, has been increased. We, Dina has worked with Tanya and myself and Becky to reallocate the way that the Medicaid funds are being used. And we're not no longer going to be using those for NCSS contracted services to offset those costs. We'll be using them for, to offset guidance costs and to offset 21(c) or after-school program expenditures.
Nice.
We realized that we may have been, for lack of a better word, kind of double dipping on Medicaid funds with the contracted services, because NCSS is receiving Medicaid funds for that purpose. That was not our interpretation, but interpretation has such changed, so we're going to discontinue doing that.
What impact does that have on our budget?
It doesn't really have a budget implication necessarily, other than this one year, we are anticipating to use more Medicaid funds than what is being raised this year, because of what we're using them for and what we've allocated in the Medicaid plan. Next year, you'll see it drop back down. But really, it's just offsetting an expense. Truly, it's just revenue coming in. But when she, when Dina drafts her Medicaid plan, she has to be specific about what that's being utilized for and make sure that it's appropriate.
So we just really shifted some, two items that were in the local budget into the Medicaid plan, brought the Medicaid items into the local.
On the special education paraprofessional salaries, do we have a need to hire a new person? What created?
A lot of that, if you, there's always the student, I'm sorry, the special ed gen and ratios for the paraprofessionals, what can be captured as special ed eligible for reimbursement costs. So a lot of times, you'll see the gen ed paraline and the special ed paraline fluctuating, and that's based on time samples. So how they're being used between special ed and gen ed may have changed since what we were budgeting. I don't think we, you're hiring any persons right now.
We have one that we are hiring, just recently, we have a long-term leave, a maternity leave. And so we're hiring someone to take her place, and then she'll stay at that grade level, based on the number of IEPs and having to support that. We also are in the midst daily of juggling para supports based on the needs of some of our new kids that came in that we weren't aware of in May. So trying to support and cover the needs of those students without necessarily hiring, and right now, we're okay. Hopefully, it'll work out without having to hire more.
Okay.
The special ed and central office and ECP assessments have not been updated at this time. We're working over the next month to reconcile those and get caught up with what's truly happening at this point in time with those costs. But that's a little bit bigger of a project, because it's all centralized at the SU. So those lines right now are just anticipated at what was budgeted, but we'll be addressing those as we move through the year, just like last year.
At the regional meeting in Winuski, they spent considerable time talking about the new special ed funding model, which is supposed to hit in the next two years. I use the word hit, but next year.
There'll be an impact, yes.
There will.
Have they been teaching, training you and all that since then?
Yes, yeah. So really, it starts in 2021 and goes up through 2025, but it's a big, a big deal, so.
And they've been supportive? Given resources to help with that?
I think they're on the right track.
Okay, that's good.
Unfortunately, the lady who did an excellent presentation in Winuski, her job, that was on a Wednesday, her job was eliminating agency on Friday.
On a Friday.
So I don't hold out optimism that this is going to go smoothly.
And it's a big change. I'm not sure, you're familiar with what he's talking about, the change from a reimbursement model to a census block model. So that, it's a, it's a big deal. Yeah. And delivery of services altogether, so.
Just when I was starting to understand.
Me too.
Thank you.
So I don't know if anybody has more questions. You're always welcome to email me or call me or stop in.
I know you're always really good about that.
And normally, there would be, like, the board to consider just action to accept it, not necessarily approve it.
Okay. So we need someone to motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report for September?
August, through August 31st.
Through August 31st.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Megan seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? Great, motion carried. They're accepted through August. Thank you.
And then we just have the warrants for the month of August as well.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the check warrants for August 2018 in the amount of $826,030 and $0.57.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Warrants passed. Anymore? No.
The budget.
So I do, what's that?
The budget prep is under here.
I do see that budget prep there.
Yes. Get started. Talk about it later, too.
Because you meet every six weeks, I just have a little bit of concern maybe around how that will play out. So after tonight, you will meet October 24th, which I will be bringing your draft one. And then you won't meet again until December 19th, which would be very late, well, not necessarily late for a draft, too, but there would be possibly a lot of work to do.
Too late for draft.
Yeah. Because Swanton town clerks like their information about the third week of January, but I need time to prepare to make that happen. I don't know if Julie wants to speak to?
The other piece?
Other pieces that might come into play here.
The other piece that we may discuss during the Act 46 update is if the secretary's proposal moves forward and there is no injunction because of class action lawsuits, then there would be a transition board, and it would be the transitions board's responsibility to build the budget. But that budget would not be warned for town meeting. It would be for the new board that would be elected on town meeting would then, the transition board would prepare a budget, hand it over to the new board, they'd be sworn in, they'd look at it, they'd prepare an article, warn it, and it would probably be a late April, early May vote.
So a special vote.
It would be a special vote. So all of that, there are a lot of if-then's involved. The beginning of the process, though, wouldn't be much different, because you build a merged budget by building individual budgets, the way we always do, and then put it all together and run the numbers at the end. So the beginning process, I don't see being that different. And by the time we're really getting into it, we would have an idea of what our next steps and timelines would be, hopefully.
Well, let's just tentatively, when would we want to schedule a meeting in between the October and December? What would make most sense in terms of details?
Well, again, I think, I'm not as concerned about that timeframe. It's more the December into January, because that tends to be when a lot of information's being released by the state.
Right.
So there's, there's a lot of preliminary work I can do with, you know, what's been negotiated for contracts and everything that I can, so I can make salary and benefit adjustments. I can work with Dina and Justina around what they think's going to be happening with student needs, class sizes, all that sort of stuff. But as far as tax rate implications and all of that, when they're announcing that, so probably something in between December and the January 23rd would be, or moving the January 23rd up.
Last year, I think, we had the December meeting, and then I think it was the first week we got back.
We did.
And I think even when we started planning, I thought we tentatively.
I only have the hard schedule in my calendar.
Let me look.
I had January 3rd.
January 3rd. It's a Thursday night, and that, I think we had tentatively tried to reserve that. But Julie.
January 2nd, possible board budget meeting?
Yeah.
Do you have it on the 2nd?
I don't have it on the 2nd. I think we took the 0.
I have the 3rd. I think we talked about the 3rd for some reason.
The 2nd, I don't think we could do, because.
I have the 2nd.
You do?
Because the points are meetings involving on Wednesdays.
Right. But I thought that the first Wednesday of the month was probably Northwest. That's why we can't do it on the Wednesday.
We have it double booked there.
Right. So I think that maybe was why we were looking at Thursday, because we, we thought it would be important to have it that week.
Yes.
But if people were flexible with the date, we could move it to Thursday, as long as you don't have an MVU meeting that night.
So I have a question, though. I thought that, I thought the transitional board was going to be appointed. It's not.
Yes. So your transitional, well, we, if you want, we can talk about it.
No, but wouldn't that affect that? Because isn't the transitional board going to be in place before January 3rd?
Yes.
If there is no injunction.
Right. So this conversation could be for naught.
Correct.
If everything goes according to the agency of ed timelines and expectations, we're
asked to merge, there are no injunctions that prevent that, then there are quick timelines, and within 60 days, you have an ed meeting, you have an appointed transition board.
Who appoints him?
I was just going to ask that. Do you want me to talk about it now or not?
Well, I actually, yeah, we can wait.
Because I'm happy to.
I got it.
If that's okay with you all, because we've got.
I suggest we try to pick a January date, and if we don't need it. But I think you said our budget planning, we would probably need an extra day.
And I thought we said January 3rd.
For right now, could we keep both the 2nd and 3rd? Because I'm on the MVU board, and Thursday nights are usually MVU board meetings.
That's what I just said. I didn't know if there was.
So I won't know until tomorrow.
It's not scheduled now.
No, but tomorrow night it might be.
We, could we do a meeting on Wednesday before the SU board, say from 5 to 6?
I would prefer that we go Thursday. I think everybody would.
I would, too, but you had just said if then we.
Oh, I said, so if we keep both dates free until we get another month, then we'll know.
So we either do regular time on Thursday, or we do earlier. But actually, 6 to 7 might be enough, wouldn't it, on Wednesday?
I think that's what we did last time, something short, wasn't it? We just did budget.
Yeah.
It's hard to know. It depends on what's coming down from the state level.
Okay, so we'll keep the 2nd and 3rd open, and we'll see what we can do. Okay, thank you.
As soon as we could make that decision, I think it's just respectful of those calendars.
You'll know, Dawn, after tomorrow night's meeting. Okay, great. So are we ready to move on to our guest speakers? Did you want to introduce them?
I would be glad to. We are very fortunate to have, who I really consider are strong instructional leaders here at Swanton School. They have very many different titles. They really started out as literacy and math content specialists, and they still are. But they also lead our EST team, along with Jess McPeck, and they also have the title of coaches. So they're, they're doing everything, and it's really working hand-in-hand with our teachers. So they have spent a lot of time this summer working on our Sback data. They help teachers immensely in the instruction, but also in helping to prep our kids to actually take those tests, along with rusty Gregory. So Deb Boucher is our coach and literacy content specialist, and Joan Lumbra, our math coach and math content specialist. So they're going to lead us through, they did this for us last year, and it was very exciting. They're sharing it with the board first, and then on our in-service day, October 18th, we're going to share the exact same information with our staff. Welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
So hence the reason why it's called Part Two, because some of the things that we talk about tonight are really going to be reflective and consistent with some of the things that we said a year ago at this time. So based on Sback and local assessment data, these are the five initiatives that continue to really have a positive impact on moving us forward. They are the same ones that we refer to. So MTSS is our multi-tiered system of support. PLCs are professional learning communities. Marzano's framework is that instructional framework that gives everyone here that common language of instruction. PBIS, you're familiar with positive behavior and interventions and supports, and of course, technology plays a significant role in our positive impacts. However, these, this next slide is really the more specific actions that we've implemented that have strategically kind of contributed toward our school improvement. Each action corresponds directly with our original five initiatives, and you'll see that kind of happened and unfold throughout our presentation. Refining our EST process, more effective use of data, Wednesday after-school PLCs now, our learning targets connected to proficiency scales, and our Sback block assessments in literacy and math.
Every Wednesday you have?
Every Wednesday. So what you, as I mentioned before, our multi-tiered system. To clarify the differences between our tiers, we, it looks like this. Tier one is essentially that good, solid first instruction that happens in all of our classrooms that give our students access to on-grade level standards. Tier two is that differentiated instruction, where it could be done by a classroom teacher, interventionist, or a special educator. That's that additional support that happens in our classrooms that still allow our kids to meet on-grade level standards, but it needs to be differentiated in some capacity. The tier three is that instruction that really is that intensive intervention that's below grade level. It's for students that are having difficulty accessing the on-grade level standards. What you see in yellow is really where we would love to see our populations, 100% of our kids in tier one, 10 to 15% of our kids in tier two, after doing some first instruction, and then 5%. The, where, where, the goal is to have Swanton at those percentages. We're not quite there. But I will say that one of the greatest accomplishments that I think we've actually made with our MTSS is that we now have an accountable system that's intentional and really better meeting the needs of all of our students, which is really exciting.
Joan, where do two and three, the tiers, where do, where does that instruction occur?
Good question. Tier two is really within the classroom. So it's, it's, a teacher gives her whole group instruction, and then I may need to break my kids up, if I were the classroom teacher, into small groups to do something just a little bit different. In math, for example, I may need to kind of go back to some real concrete models for kids, but it happens within the classroom. Tier three is really pull-out. Kids come out to usually work with, in a small group, with a math specialist or a literacy specialist, to really hone in on real specific things with those kids that are in need of that.
And this is our MTSS, our multi-tiered system of support. And this is, the first thing we did was we were trying to refine our ESTs. So we have two review meetings a year, and that means that each student that's on EST gets a meeting, usually in the first part of the year and the second part of the year. We also have clearly defined roles, so that all the players on the EST really know their responsibilities. And we have more transparent communication with the teachers and anybody else involved with that student. So this, this is actually an example of a lesson and the assessment notes that the interventionists and the specialists keep on a daily basis. And they share these folders with the classroom teacher and the specialist team. So it helps everyone to see the growth and the needs of the students as we determine the next steps for intervention in classroom, classroom instruction. And we use these observational notes and data during ESTs and specialist PLC meetings to make informed data-based decisions around the instruction and services for those students. So as you can see, this is someone's notes, and it's just the top part where it says blue N112 running records. This just means that that was an assessment that was given for that student. And then the, the interventionist or the specialist, we call them specialists, who do the intervention, write the notes about it, and the teachers have access to this and anybody else who needs it, so that the teacher can play off from that. So more effective use of data is another part that we're doing, and we're using data in all of our decision-making. So the PLCs are our professional learning communities, and they continue to inform instruction, building towards greater academic success. So Wednesday after-school PLCs, they provide uninterrupted working sessions, because everybody knows that during the day, there's no, there's no sacred time to yourself when you're in a school, and you have so many students that you're responsible for. So the teachers get this time for some uninterrupted work. And then they do have their common teams, planning times during the day, which they use for meetings about students, and then they do their lesson planning during that time, some of it. They're looking at data and the next steps, and they're discussing other needs at their own grade levels. So they do still have that common planning time, too. So the more effective use of data is really the decision-making cycle that you see. It's kind of blurry, but it's, it's there. They plan, they do, they study, and then they act. And this is the cycle of the PLCs. So they ask those four questions during PLCs. We might, we might at a PLC work mostly on one question, but all of those four questions are always incorporated in some way. So this slide is actually, it kind of shows you what the proficiency scales are, because that's what we base all of our assessments on, are the proficiency scales. These are actually district-wide. So these aren't something that just Swanton does. This is something that everyone in Northwest does. So these are examples, and what they're done is they're used by the teachers and students to determine the student's current level of progress towards meeting the standard. The proficiency scales indicate the student achievement as it relates to a given standard, and it uses a four-point system, where a score of a 3.0 indicates proficiency within a standard. So on your right-hand side are the math proficiency, that's an example of a math proficiency scale, and on the left-hand side are, is an example of the literacy proficiency scale. So if you look at the threes, that's where we want our kids to be. And on the top, you'll see the actual Common Core standard that they're working towards. So if a student gets a two, or is in the two range, that's where we know the intervention needs to be happening a lot. A student in a one range usually has a difficulty, difficulty doing any of the skills without help from an adult. The threes are those kids that finally reach that independence. And then the fours, we give the kids the opportunity to score even higher. So this would be where enrichment happens. So the scale also provides a model for the teachers to be able to differentiate their instruction, too.
You said these, this is commonplace throughout Franklin Northwest. What if we went to Maple Run, or South Burlington, or Rattleboro? Does this, does this build off something statewide?
It built, yes. It builds off the Common Core state standards. So they may, they may or may not have proficiency scales. We've been pretty fortunate that we're kind of ahead a lot, not necessarily ahead of every district, but we've, we've been really fortunate to have a lot of professional development around this earlier than some. So, and our scales may look different than another, another district's for sure in the state, but it's all built off from the Common Core.
And we, we work, we, this work really was done at the district level. So we worked really closely with Libby and other math leaders that are represented the different schools. So we meet on a regular basis and do a lot of this work at, at central office and with the curriculum coordinator kind of leading us through that process. And then we come back to the schools. Each leader goes back to their school to really work with teachers around the proficiency scales. Gary?
I had a question about, when you said everything's data-based, you know, you're looking at, and so I understand this one to four scale and with teachers and everything, but what about the teacher notes? You know, there were some numbers in that, too. Is there any kind of, is it more qualitative data that you're using from the teacher's notes, or are there numbers in there that correlate to this?
Well, for the interventionists, probably.
The specialists, that's what I should say.
The specialist, yeah. The specialist, actually, their notes kind of go towards whatever the teacher is teaching. So for example, if a, if a specialist finds that a student is having a difficulty in this area, it usually relates to one of those learning targets. Or it may be a target from a proficiency scale that they missed, missed mastering at a year before, and I hope I'm saying this right. And so the notes, it's, that, that doesn't give, they never give numbers, basically. If they give a number, it would just be maybe, in reading at least, it would be possibly a, a reading level that they could share with the teacher. This, this work, these kinds of scores are what ends up on the report card, and that's the teacher's, the whole, you know, seeing the whole child as, the whole picture of the child, to see that mastery for that.
And I think for math, it's more quantitative, because I'm thinking about the three. We build common assessments across the PLC, and then every classroom gives that common assessment that's reflective of, questions on that common assessment are reflective of twos, threes, so that we know where kids are, and it does end up being a quantitative score.
And we, in literacy, we also have common assessments, but not as many as math, and it's a little more difficult to, to have that commonality because of different reading levels and so on. But that's something that we're working on as well. The post-assessments are common, and many of the pre-assessments are common in literacy, but the monitoring tools that they're using in between are very different, vary from classroom to classroom.
Thank you.
But all based on those same, that, that is their, that's kind of their bible.
The alternate.
That's what they, that's what they're all looking towards.
And I have a quick question to sort of build on that. So you had stated that, so these scores, this is what we see on our kids' report cards. Is this one through four, is that, does that at some point transition to traditional grades?
No, not anymore.
And that is within our district, or statewide, we're moving toward it?
That varies. I'm not sure about statewide. Julie, you might know that.
I would say standards-based grading, which is in place to one degree or another in most schools, is, has definitely replaced traditional, especially in elementary and middle school. High schools are moving toward proficiency-based graduation reporting. But standards-based grading is really about have you met the standard or not? And then giving students opportunities to exceed the standard and go deeper as well. But it really is very targeted about the learning objectives.
You could say one's an A, one's a D.
Right. Well, that's what I'm thinking.
You kind of could just skip the beat.
No, no. No, you can't. No. It's a very different shift in mindset of, does the student, are they at grade level in what they know and are able to do? Or are they nearly there? Or do they have more? As a student, I could be in multiple places, depending on the tasks and the standards.
I gotta tell you, in business, this is going to be really helpful, because everybody sees those performance reviews as grades, you know, my A or my BSC, whereas, you know, meeting the job expectations is solid. And so having this cultural shift will really help in the other culture shifts.
And we've had standards-based grading in our, in our district for a very long time.
So they'll be graduating soon.
Right, right.[1786.21]
And I mean, if we, if you attach the numbers two, as Julie stated, you know, one is really below the standard. Two is nearly meeting and three is I'm there and four is I'm above that standard. But again, like in math, for example, you know, a lot, the big ideas build on one another. So I'm going to go through that proficiency scale at different levels through the time as I continue to kind of raise the bar.
And it's, so this is the one through four, it's through the Swanton School at MBU. Is it the same or is there, we're moving toward that, so it's different?
It's different, it's moving toward there.
They're still giving letter grades.
Oh, they are?
But they're moving away from that?
No, they're still going to be giving a letter grade.
Okay.
Okay.
But they're trying to base their scores on standards and learning expectations.
And in the literacy district team, we have members from MBU on our team. So the proficiency scales are being done with their input as well. And they're being revised, too, as time goes on. You know, you try something and you know that you need to make some adjustments and so they've been doing that, too. We've been doing that as a team.
It's become a real challenge, I think, for the people at MBU because good things happening in the elementary schools. And I think that parent, a lot of parent involvement. Going to middle school, you still have some of that. You get to high school and many parents are looking at their kids going to college, they're trying to go to college. And immediately they want to know if they're going to go four or three-point-five. And so we spent a lot of time the last couple of years talking about that. And I think that Jen Disorga and some of the people working out are really doing a good job. But I think we're getting a little pushback from the community.
It's an adjustment.
And I think some of it is because people don't understand. When you don't understand something, I think there's a certain amount of fear that your child's going to get short-changed. So it's been an interesting discussion. A question, if I might, Mr. The administration, I know over the years, we've brought in new teachers. Is this foreign language to them or the colleges having, doing some prep work so that when they arrive here, we say proficiency scales? They don't go scales outside?
My guess is that right now the college prep people are not surprised with this language. And I think that they're talking, their assessment work is really along this. Might be proficiency scales, it may be, I mean, it's proficiency-based, it's standards. Because they really incorporated the whole standards movement, so that's not forward to anyone.
Because sometimes fire rate is kind of behind, people come out not ready for what's happening.
Well, the college prep people are different from the admissions officers and the college board of trustees that is making the decisions on admissions. So I don't know if.
No, he's talking about our teacher prep, Megan.
Does, teachers coming out?
Yeah, do they have this knowledge?
Sure.
And I think the little that I know with the college transition, they're talking to the high schools right now because I don't want to speak, because that's not really what we're talking about. But there's been a lot of communication between high school and college about not using GPAs and all of that. So there's, those conversations have been happening because it's going to be different.
It's also Vermont is not alone.
I think that's where the parent fear is. They're worried about if we're adopting something and the colleges don't know how to evaluate it.
They do.
That's a different question than what I asked.
Yes, I was, I was, there's two different questions, though. But, and the high school piece, I mean, we care, but right now, I mean, we're doing what we think is in alignment with that. Yes, our teachers are coming in prepared. The other thing, though, I have to say is with our PLCs and the guidance of Joan and Deb, they're getting up to speed even quicker than they might be having to figure it out on their own, on their team, so.
Okay, so the next part that we've been working with, of course, is the Marzano framework. And that is basically our common language for instruction. So within that, we're developing learning targets and having goal setting. And what you see here, the picture, it's not as big as we wish it could be, but it would take up the whole slide. But this is an example of what teachers are doing. So learning targets are the skills or strategies that teachers are focusing on during their first instruction. And they're assessed through monitoring and informative and common assessments. They're listed on each proficiency scale under the corresponding Common Core state standard. So what you saw in that last, all those bullets, those are the learning targets that we're working on. So some of the learning targets, though, are so large that the teachers have to unwrap them and then teach them in smaller increments. So that happens a lot, that's where they have to do that. And they usually do that as a team. They'll unwrap them as a team or I will help them with it or Joan or I will do it and then they'll contribute to it. Our Swanton goal is to always have those learning targets for the day posted in some way in the classroom for all students to see. And if the students see them and hear them and hear the teacher explain them, then they're constantly going to be reminded of what they're working towards each day. So using the learning targets, the classroom teachers and math and literacy specialists will set their learning goals for their students. So the targets are the bigger picture and the goal settings are the steps to get to those targets.
So what you see here is Marzano's actual framework. The nice part about this framework is that it's not content-specific. So the PE teacher actually has instructional goals that can be similar to that of a classroom teacher. The overarching kind of lesson categories are delineated at the top and those are things that teachers must do in order for the learning to be effective. The design categories are in bold and those are where they guide teachers throughout different types of lessons. The elements which are noted by the numbers are the instructional strategies that we want teachers to be intentional about. All teachers are using this framework to set goals and really improve their practice, which is really exciting because it allows us to have that common language throughout our school.
Can I interject one thing? Just then, not to go off track, but when Joan shows this at another time at a meeting, we can talk about how this is now in alignment with our new supervision and evaluation model. So this is just, this is all about instruction and the ladies are really working hard on that, but there's going to be a growth from that as well.
So what a new student, a student new to us comes from high gate. We're on the same page with all of them.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's what I'd hope you'd say, but.
And we haven't been able to say that for too many years. Something pretty new to our district is being able to all be on the same page. So the next thing is our data, using PBIS to improve academics and PBIS is our positive behavior interventions and supports. So the whole purpose for PBIS is to continue to build a strong social-emotional system which allows for greater academic success. And our goal is always that our students will be in the classroom more and that they'll have clear expectations for common areas, for playground, lunchroom, everywhere in our school. And the supports, we have allowed kids, the supports have allowed kids to be on the same playing field and they can focus more on their academics. This has been a big, a big help to the academic part.
This past year, so technology is another supporting our initiatives in terms of moving us forward. This past year, our students took the SBACK block assessments in math and literacy to not only kind of familiarize students with the testing system, but also the math and literacy task. This allowed, this allowed us to kind of be able to view tasks often and to be able to go back and use them as teaching points. So for example, this is a block assessment for grade three, operations and algebraic thinking. And this is actually just screenshots of the actual block assessment. And so teachers can actually use these as warm-ups and these are the kinds of questions that kids answered on the actual block. Now I could have just lost my presentation. And I did.
That's awesome.
How do we get back? I tried.
There you go. Just push the.
There you go.
Go to the.
The middle one. Here we go, sorry.
Nice job.
Sorry. So using block assessments and being able to see those questions, often our kids actually have kind of a leg up even after they've taken the particular SBACK block itself. They've done it for math and literacy. We've actually also tried to align the block assessments with the implementation of our curriculum units. The other exciting part that that we have gotten from our block assessments is that teachers are able to use the data after students finish the block assessment to drive their instruction. And they actually, it's literally when kids submit what they've done for the block assessment, the teacher actually has, what you see here, basically in there, they're able to have access through it, through the SBACK portal. So what you see here on the right-hand side is basically a student list. And you can see based on the questions that were answered, whether a student is on that particular topic at grade level, below, at or near grade level, below grade level or above grade level. You can see how kids answer the questions, one or zero. I actually worked through the PLC process to look at the questions that they did the best on and questions that they had most difficulty with. So we can have questions at the table when we talk about student data to say, okay, what does this mean based on a particular unit? What you see in the upper-left-hand side is where teachers actually, it's a grade four team notes. And it was the, an actual plan for teacher moves where they were looking at implementing a schedule change that would directly affect student learning. So it was really exciting for us to be a part of the block assessments that we just started to administer last year. And we're going to continue to do that process this year as well.
Do they have a lot of those available for you?
In math, we have four, it's the four domains. So it's operations, algebraic thinking, number and operations in base ten, geometry. It depends on the grade level, there can be four or five. In literacy, there's a lot.
And you can take them anytime you want?
Yes, you can.
Is that as often as you want?
As often as you want.
That's great.
Yeah, they're all, it's a really nice practice tool for kids and for teachers. Because the teachers get to see the types, I mean, nothing on the blocks are ever what's really on the SBACK. But it gives some very, very good information about what types of questions. And just getting kids to see the length of some of the text that they have to read before they answer the questions or the length of the writing that they have to have. For some of them, it's very eye-opening for everybody, so.
So now the greatest news of all. This is our, the SBACK data that, I'm going to start with math and then Deb's going to go to literacy. So what you see here is basically our proficiency levels for grades three through six over time. So the blue is grade three, the red is grade four, five is orange, grade five, and then green is grade six. So you can see in grades three and four, evidence of common core instruction from kindergarten. Those are the places where we're making the greatest gains of all. We're still gaining in those fifth and sixth grade, but the way I always look at it is the students that are now arriving in fifth grade have had consistent instruction with common core standards since the beginning here. I know we use a common resource in math. Prior to that, many classrooms at the same grade level could actually use a variety of different resources. So that's a look at the grades over time. This is looking at grades three through six, the scores over time. So obviously, I like the green and the orange going in the direction that they should be going. Fourteen fifteen was a pilot year. Even, I do include that data usually when I look specifically, but it was a pilot year just for the SBACK. But you can see over time, our threes and fours are going up and we want our ones to be going down. And that's indicated by the blue trend line. There's a little influx with two, but that would happen naturally because you've got some kids coming out of ones going into twos and some twos going into threes. So some bar is going to have that influx. What you see here, again, is SBACK math data, the scores of threes and fours. So those are kids that are proficient or in and above standard. And those are, again, you can see that clearly visually, that bar graph going in the right direction for us over time. This is actually where we watched, we're watching different cohorts of students go through a grade over time. So for me, in my role, I'm looking at the implementation of math content and the shift toward those Common Core standards. So what you see here is as time goes on, the ones are getting smaller. The red and the orange and the green are moving in the direction as you kind of follow those trends down through. So it's different cohorts of kids, but it's looking at the implementation of content. And you can see that also is a strength as we're moving forward.
And this is, I'm going to show you similar graphs as Joan did, but this is for literacy. So these are your grades three through six SBACK literacy data over time. And we actually started with a pilot year and going up into the present year. So our ones, twos, threes and fours over time, the green line shows a score four trends, which is above the standard. The blue line shows the score one trends, which are far below the standard. And for all of our cohorts of Swanton students taking the SBACK. So they're all going in the right direction. And this graph is your percentages of threes and fours for each year. And I'm reminded that fourteen fifteen was a pilot year, so it was a little bit different than the regular one that we're taking now. The regular SBACK years have shown continuous growth over time. Again, the same thing. And this is the same grade, the grade three literacy trends, representing the content over time, just as Joan was explaining about math. And this represents different cohorts of students, but at one grade level over time. You can see the decline in the ones and the increase in the fours and that natural shift again of twos and threes as the students shift up or down. And these students have been instructed using the same curriculum since kindergarten.
Threes and fours are almost perfectly the same line.
I know. In one year, yeah, there's just a few percentage points in between, so it's kind of showing you that, the different things about curriculum. And this is the, we just, Joan loves to make graphs, so she was doing a lot of graphing with me. So this one we were doing was the 2024 graduating class. So this is our current seventh grade. And this one is with the same cohort of students. So this is from the pilot year through year three of the SBACK. So the blue represents the ones and this time the red, the same as the others, the red are the twos. But the green is the threes and fours for the last four years. So we're seeing those kids that are at or above the standard. So from grade to grade, those students are moving towards proficiency. I think this is the last graph.
Yeah, this is the last one.
It's the last one. So this is literacy three and fours for the past four years and it shows that we've had a 10% gain. So from the pilot year, Swanton has gone from having 45% of our students being at or above proficient to 55% of our students being at or above proficient. And it's important for Joan and I to look at the data in multiple ways, that's why you saw so many graphs. And because we have to analyze for so many factors, because we're looking at curriculum, we're looking at programs, we're looking at proficiency scales. We're looking at individual students from year to year, intervention needs and different teaching practices that we're trying or modifying or improving on.
Can we go back one?
Sure.
So as I looked at current, the biggest, largest number of students are in the threes and fours. Was it intentional to group them together? I mean, I guess our goal is to get everybody at a standard, right? And beyond that, it's not as high a priority?
Well, it's, we take the kids where they are. So if they're already at the standard, we definitely want them to go, to keep pushing themselves and get higher. But our goal as a school is to get as many at the standard as possible.
But that group that maybe go beyond that, that's not broken out in your data?
Not, not in this particular case, no.
And we, just for visual purposes, we just wanted to see if we clumped those together, what that growth would look like. So that's why, I mean, you can almost say they are broken, it's just a matter of just changing the colors of the bar. You know, the fours are right here, the fours are right here, there's a line there.
The state really reports out that proficiency, which includes the three and fours, at or above.
That's fine, it's just, I was in education when gifted Ed really hit hard in the eighties. And people wanted to know that, I did a little cohort out there. As a school board member, I have no problem with three and four being merged because that means we're pushing students to the standard. I could see it something with my polarized side, it looked like maybe there was.
And it would be hard to differentiate between those kids that are always at fours and those that are, get fours on, you know, in different areas at different times. Literacy's, yeah, very complicated when it comes to that, for sure. Too many different parts of it.
We just would like an opportunity to just thank you. Thank you for listening once again to us, our FNWSU leaders, Christina and Gina, the community, our faculty and staff. We couldn't do what we do on a regular basis without the continuous support of the people that we kind of support here within our jobs. We really do believe that the initiatives that we're kind of putting forth here are really initiatives that are making a positive impact on. Initiatives that are making a positive impact on our instruction at all tiers.
I think us, oh, Swanton students and teachers are all lucky to have such great support. And it's paying off as students here are really.
The teachers have really taken on a lot too, because those Wednesday PLCs, I don't know if we mentioned it before, but those are run by the teachers. So they're, you know, Joan and I help plan, but they are doing the work themselves. And I mean, today was our first one for this year, and it was just really amazing to go around and see how hard they're all working and. Yeah, they're, it's always with the kids, with the kids in mind, and that's, that's exactly what we're all trying to do.
It's great to have that opportunity too, I'm sure a lot of schools they don't have.
That's a gift that administration has given them.
And they, um, and I don't know if this was clear or not, but Tuesdays are like our PLC days. So during that common planning time, Joan and Deb do oversee that work. And then the growth to them having time on Wednesdays to be able to continue that work. It frees up Joan and Deb if they need them with questions or things like that. But I think it's building capacity really among, among them as a team too, so.
And our teacher leaders, the people that are facilitating most of those PLCs have been going to teacher leadership training too. So it's, it's great, it's great.
So who else is on your team? Because I was off the board for a number of years and just came back on the board. But at one time, I know we had Stacy Skengus and there were a number of.
You mean the intervention, the special teams?
Okay, alright.
Um, we have.
We have three math, Mary Pelkey, Judy Callen, actually just came on board this year, and Lisa Bobat. Really support a lot of the math tier three stuff. And then literacy is.
We have Lynn Applegate, and we have Janice Magaly and Lisa Bromstedt. And then we also have two paraprofessionals that are highly trained in Yvonne Puckett and Sherri Fadden. And they also help with literacy and math as needed.
That's awesome.
It's a great team.
Well, this is so great when we think about our S back story scores and everything, so thank you, both of you. Bravo.
Thank you.
And Deb, I just have to say this, you're everywhere. I was driving to work the other day and I saw somebody out in the park with a yellow vest on or something. I think, Deb, I see her at night, I see her in the morning.
Joan does this side and I do that.
That's so funny.
It's fun. That's a great part of the, that's a wonderful part of our week, is walking on the race, for sure.
Wow, it's like, whoa.
Thank you.
You have lots of great stories.
I bet. Thank you very much. Have a cookie on the way out.
Julie, do you want to plug in or anything?
Love you.
Um, just if you wanted to.
I'm so excited, we've got another guest speaker coming up too.
Julie?
Jason.
Jason.
Oh, that's right.
Um, we asked Jason if he would come in, because we wanted to give the board an update of the work that was done this summer. We also met with the representative of your facilities committee. We thought, last year we did this and the board appreciated it. We don't want to take a whole lot of time, but we were going to let Jason run through a few things, if you don't mind. And then we thought we would take a, a quick walk into both of the buildings. Because I think it would be very meaningful to be able to see the amount of work that was done this summer and the, the plans that we've got for further work.
That's great.
Alright, so I guess I can give a quick rundown of projects that happened this summer. Starting off with the last meeting I was at, we had the, the window blinds got approved. Those all were installed, everything went really smooth. Uh, production was able to get it done by the second week of August. They came the third week of August, about three days here. Um, we did all the demo, they did all the install. Uh, we've had nothing but good feedback from the teachers. The blinds are one hundred and ten percent better than the old ones that we had, and uh, it was a great project. The other one that happened, uh, that we got approved prior to, to July was the Babcock fire alarm. Um, that system is in next door. We will be doing one additional upgrade, adding some voice evac over there. At no, no additional cost to Swanton, just an upgrade that the fire marshal would like to see done. And um, so that, that project went really smooth. Summit did all the work, spent a good majority of the summer here. We had our first fire drill Monday.
Everybody heard it.
Everybody heard it. Every single classroom has a horn, strobe, pull station at every exit. Um, we're, we're covered to the max possibility that we can be now.
And a concrete building.
And a concrete building. It was, again, it was a, a great project, huge, uh, as far as safety is concerned.
So everybody wanted to get out of the building fast because of all the alarms and.
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah. I mean, prior to, there was, there was zero sirens in the classrooms, everything was in the hallway. Now every single classroom has, has a horn strobe, so.
And if you have to keep your door closed, which their doors are supposed to be closed, if you're doing an active activity. There were some struggles at times to get it here, so it was a priority to get that fixed.
Now Summit did this, right?
Correct.
So they are now a vendor?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Did they look at the price on the bids and say, they made a mistake?
Uh, not necessarily. Uh, he was, we, we had a couple of different conversations with him and he was able to do it for that price and, and felt comfortable with it. And, and was glad that, that they're on board, I'm glad they're on board.
That's good, that's a good help.
So, yep, yep, so no, everything, everything worked out good. As far as Babcock, we continued with the asbestos abatement in the original sixty-four, sixty-five wing. Uh, we had two rooms left to go, room twenty-seven and twenty-eight. This year was, it went without a hitch this year. Um, they were in and out because we only did the two smaller rooms. They were in and out in three days. Um, we had our waiting period, put the new floors in, uh, put the cabinets in. There was no issues whatsoever, um, with the abatement this year. Uh, along with that, um, when we put the new floors in, we had four bathrooms still in the Babcock building. That had the VCT tile floor. That we had to wax and stuff every year and just not, not good for a bathroom, so. Uh, all four of those bathrooms got renovated and we put ceramic tile in all of those bathrooms. So now, every single bathroom in, in the Babcock building has proper flooring for, for what a bathroom should be. Much easier to clean and keep clean.
Just keep smiling.
More happy.
Yep, um, one of the things that we had worked, been working on some different concrete projects throughout. Because of our dismissal, uh, the way we do dismissal at Babcock. We added the sidewalk from the gym, uh, onto the curb. In doing that, we had a manhole that was pretty well broken up. Safety hazard, trip hazard. We were able to, you know, that all got tied in with the same project, um, came out really good, everybody's using it now. Should be much better in the winter to have everybody actually on a slide drop versus walking across the lawn. So, so that was a, a nice little project to finish up. We did renovations on the, on Dawn's office on the, uh, next door, uh, the secretary's office. So we had some probably late, mid, late eighties countertops that had been in there that were pretty rough. Got all that out of there, uh, redid the whole room. Got all the, the countertop sills out where the windows are, um, bought our new desk, got that all in there. The only thing I'm waiting on, um, we waited on the, the glass to get the glass cut. And we actually had cable painting glass cut that last week, they should be installing next week. So we'll have five new sliding panels of glass, uh, still going in. Um, like I said, hopefully next week that'll be done, and that'll, that'll be the last of, of that project. Little cosmetic procedure, the main sign when you come into twenty-fourth, uh, to the fourth street entrance. We had Chavaya Stoneworks do the, the pillars, do the brickwork on the pillars, uh, and put blue stone caps on. Dressed up that, made a huge difference in, in, in the way that big granite sign looks. Looks great, came out really good, nice little project, uh, that we got crossed off our list. Outside work, we had the new shingles put on the garage in the picnic area, uh, the, the little gazebo out. Uh, we put the new shingles on the roof. Again, that was just a, a small job, no, no issues whatsoever. Uh, as far as central, um, we got started on the big renovations in the red house. It was a project, it went relatively smooth, uh, no big issues. Couple of issues because of the heat, um, you know, it's a hot summer in here, but uh, nothing, nothing too crazy. We, uh, we took three classrooms, demoed all the carpet and old flooring, baseboard. Um, and the core room, demoed all the carpet, baseboard. We painted all three classrooms, painted the core room, uh, painted all the cupboards. Painted all of the doors in the red house, not just the, um, not just the three classrooms. We painted all of the doors this summer, we were able to get that all done. We got really good feedback from the three teachers. That were affected classroom-wise, uh, the rest of the teachers loved the way the core rooms came out. Big project, uh, it took the majority of the summer to complete, but uh, it, it really went pretty smooth. And, you know, next summer, we're hoping to do the next four classrooms and finish the red house and.
What's on, uh, did you put tiles?
Yeah, we put, just like what's in the hallway, we put the VCT tiles down.
I'd love to see it.
So it came out really good. The, the two, the two end rooms, um, Sarah Stones and, and also Deutsch, their rooms were, they had twenty-five year old carpet. So their rooms were good rooms to start with because they were really, really bad. So they were both very appreciative of, of us starting with them, so, uh, yeah, they came out really good. Yeah, I think that's about the majority of it. I mean, round about, we did probably close to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of work this summer.
I'm working on vacation time.
Yeah, I'm working on it, we'll get there sometime, so.
An incredibly long list of stuff you guys did.
We got a lot done this summer, it was, it was by far the busiest summer.
It was, and the, the thing to remember is, like, this school isn't empty in the summer. So Jason's staff was incredible, and for him to orchestrate the timing of all of this. We have summer school in here, we have summer academy crossroads, we had our, our camps, we had tutoring. So working around that, so Jason worked really hard, storage of stuff. Our teachers were phenomenal, every year it's been tough when we've done those projects. Because we have teachers that, um, spend their summers differently, some are in here like every week. Uh, puttering, doing little things. Um, some come in the week before, two weeks before, so they're all different. But they're impacted, so for example, in red house, we usually have tutoring in there, we couldn't this year. So that impacted blue house, because that's, they couldn't get in because tutoring was there. In the red house, we had to move everything out into other classrooms. So even if those teachers weren't having any work done, they couldn't get in because they were a storage shed. So that, the domino effect on this, and, you know, our first summer with the asbestos, some things slowed us down, so. You have to be ready, you, and in fairness to those teachers, you have to give them time to get those classrooms ready. So the way, the amount that got done this summer and the way his crew worked in a really hot, hot way. Plus still taking care of all the outside stuff, I mean, the, the weeds, the mowing of the lawn, so. It's just, it's with real appreciation that, one, the board supported these changes. And, you know, are supporting this five-year plan to keep these things going. But the fact that you were able to get it all done is, it's just incredible.
It was, it was a good summer, it was, it was busy, but it was, we didn't encounter any problems, so it was, it was a good summer.
So if you're up for, I, I think Jason, what we could do is show them red house. And then we could scoot over to Babcock just to show them those last two rooms. Uh, even the cement thing and Dawn's office, if that's okay? Alright, great. With a question, and you can go home if that's okay.
Did we have more questions?
I think he had a question for you guys.
Oh, yes. I would like to talk about that, I was wondering, I, I asked Jason during our walk about what the plans are for air conditioning. Just because it's getting hotter and hotter and.
We did have a community member reach out to the town, uh, as well as us, and Eric, so it's good to talk to him.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine, I mean, what is it like, I was doing some research on it too when I left here because it was so hot. I thought, how could these kids, um, function? And I know it talks about like forty-five percent of the high schools don't have it, and it talks about how their grades, their test scores go down. And without air conditioning and the heat and stuff like that, once it hits over a certain degree. Which I know we must be hitting here quite more and more frequently.
It gets, it gets pretty hot in here for sure. Yeah, I mean, as far as, all I would like to know is, is, is to what extent do you want, do you want to go about this? I've already talked to the, our local HVAC tech that I use. I've talked to one of his supervisors and one of his project coordinators. They're putting together a couple options. One of the, the big questions that, that goes along with that is, how do we want to implement it? There's, there's lots of different ways, obviously, you've got wall units, you've got, we've got air handlers throughout this building. We've got air handlers in the sixty-six wing. In the, the seventy-nine wing, we have individual unit ventilators, so that would be a little bit different.
Years ago, they did a study, and they said, what was the issue, they couldn't, the air handle, something wasn't big enough or something?
Well, and that's, that's kind of where, where we're kind of holding steady right now. We're probably going to need to get a mechanical engineer involved. To come in and really look at our equipment, to see if our equipment's capable of converting, um, and, and adding, I should say.
You know, I'm not on the facilities committee, I think that's Toby who's in charge of that. Am I stepping, my, overstepping my boundaries?
No, it's fine, I just, we just, we just kicked it around the elementary. I think we, this comes up every five, six years.
I would love to see a study done or something, if you could, do something, you know, if that's something you guys were.
Yeah, I think it's going to cost money to do that though.
Not much money, but.
I, I'm not sure, I haven't reached out to an engineer yet. We have, we have a mechanical engineer that, that we've used several times just since I've been here. Um, between all, all the work we've done in both buildings with boilers and air handlers. Um, I can reach out to him as early as tomorrow morning and, and have a sit down with him. And, uh, and go over some numbers and, and see what he'll, what he'll do for us.
I think that sounds great, what do you guys think?
I, I think it's a good idea, I think it was about ten years ago, it might have been even longer, we looked into it, did pan out. I guess there were other things that came up. The only thing I would say is, if we're going to do it, we need to do it for both buildings, for all spaces. Because if we just did this building, I think we'd get pushback from the community.
Absolutely.
That's great, okay.
So, well, if, if we're, if we're really serious, the only thing I would add is, think of timeframe. We already might not even be able, I, I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, we'd probably have to go with a separate article on this. And then, so we're already probably not even talking about town meeting day, but that's, that would. Just so we all know if we're realistic about it, I don't know, Dawn, I, do you think, I, I don't think there's any way.
I think it would be a hustle to get all the specs, you know, if you could talk with the public intelligently.
Right.
But it looks like we might have a special.
But let's start and see.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Once we get an engineer on board.
When we get the first number, it's a million dollars, we know that the discussion is.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
And I think that's the biggest thing is, is seeing, you know, we, we really don't know what, what we're talking for, right, so.
That would be important to know.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I was just going to say in closure with this too, when we had talked about continuation, especially around the area of maintenance. I mean, those conversations will happen as we move forward with the budget and, and just, you know, looking at the money that we had put in this year. And that really did help to take care of this. And with some of the, the carryover that the board had approved, so. Just keeping that with the air conditioning conversation, but I see those as two separate things. Because air conditioning, I think, would be a totally separate. But, um, as we get ready to start talking budget, I think these next steps that we have in mind.
Of course, we could always just do the offices.
They're all.
That would be suicide.
Well, Justina's isn't, but ours is, and we have a lot of visitors on days like this.
I bet. Thank you, thank you, Jason, for everything, that was great. Bravo. Kudos.
I'd like to, but share it with your crew, we were very, I think, very positive, very impressed with all of the good work.
Absolutely, I certainly will, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Laura.
Thank you very much. Okay, so write the principals report.
I'm gonna be very brief because everyone has had a chance, uh, to look at it. I just wanted to, um, let you know about our enrollment, I just wanted to focus on some of those numbers. We are at the, as of the tenth of September, we are at five hundred and twenty-nine students, grades K through six. Um, in our spotlight on data, we, we had a big influx of students, we had forty-two new students register. Of those forty-two, nine of them were IEP students. And then when we looked at, um, the number that left us this year, there was approximately twenty-four, which was an increase of eighteen new students. The other piece of data too, um, Kelly Shavay, our Medicaid clerk, was just updating all of our IEP caseloads. We currently have eighty-nine IEP students, um, seventy-one of those students are eligible for Medicaid. So those numbers are, are creeping up. Um, and I, I think I just wanna keep saying this, there's lots and lots of headlines going around where, um, student population is decreasing, that is not our trend right now. And, and I think that that's a message that we need to keep sharing with our community. Right now, we waited till we, uh, got things up and running, but we're doing, um, childifying numbers as, as best we can, working with ECP. We always look at our birth rates of a given year. We're gonna look at those instead of just the, the year, really the school age kids. Um, we're gonna try to dig deeper too, to see how off those numbers are from, you know, the number of kids born in a certain year to who actually shows up here. Kindergarten is always hard because we, we have those numbers of, of births and swanton, but we have a lot of movement. So I think it makes it harder to plan, but at least with some of those numbers, so that's just something I wanted to keep the board aware of, those, those numbers as they keep increasing.
Last year, the numbers were up by at least fifteen or more, I think.
Yeah, yeah, and it's just steadily, and right now, our special ed staff is really bursting at the seams at this point, we're doing some shifts in caseloads and numbers.
When you think about it, it's almost, almost two classrooms between last year and this year, as far as the numbers.
Exactly, when you look at that.
I think last year, I thought we were like at five seventy-five or five eighty with preschool, and this is, yeah, six twenty-two.
Do you know, the, have you had time to see where these students are coming from? I mean, is it like Highgate, Franklin, Sheldon?
This year, no, it was a variety, it was, and we do usually, Dawn, at the beginning of the year, it's not as much Highgate, Sheldon, Franklin, that happens in the middle of the year, we had some kids coming from out of state, a, a family from Maine, um, a couple from Colchester.
Winuski.
See, that's, that's, to me, that's good because that's, that's real growth.
Yes, yes, exactly.
There's not to be a person left their apartment, Highgate to go to apartment.
Right, and then there, we're just shifting back and forth, but yeah, Winuski too, so.
Good, interesting.
Two students came from the Waldorf School, they're living here, so it was, it was a variety, so we're just keeping that in mind, but John, yeah, when you say that, as far as the number of classrooms. We are currently, just to give you that overview again, four of each grade level. We have five kindergarten classes, those numbers are low this year, but I think they're gonna creep right back up. What's our bigger numbers are grades one and two, because our five Ks merge into four first grade, so those teachers are doing a great job, but, um, it will be interesting to see this year, these teachers, i- it's, no one ever complains about the numbers, but they're, the, I talked with one K teacher the other day and her excitement of what she can do with just thirteen kids within her classroom. Just the, the idea of how far she can take them in those areas of early math and literacy. And they're just really excited about that, so, so we'll have to play that by year to see how that looks for our future. Um, also on here, just once again, data, um, our, our staff members who took part in summer professional learning, there's a link to that, but over forty-one professional staff members did, some of them in more than one learning opportunity. Another thing, just really to celebrate, um, Gianna Mesher, our teacher for our instrumental music program, she did a phenomenal job with recruitment, um, and the numbers of kids she has involved right now, our total is, um, out of the two hundred and twenty-two eligible fourth through sixth graders, um, that forty-four percent are in our instrumental music program.
That is, that's a lot.
So, you know, when you talk about cuts or things like that, she works really, really hard and our kids are engaged with this, so that was just exciting data to share. I think everything else is kind of just, Jason went over the facilities, what our kids are doing, the, we, you know, a lot hasn't happened since I wrote this as far as us starting and kicking off the year, but those, those highlights of numbers, we were really excited about.
I noticed that you mentioned, uh, the, I'm gonna call it the sports program, but the athletic program.
Yes.
Is going in a, I'm gonna say a positive direction, but a little different direction than we might have thought three or four months ago.
Yes, and I, you weren't here at, at the last meeting, we had talked about.
But I did read it in the minutes.
Okay, good, we had talked about partnering with, um, the Swanton Rec program that didn't work out. We were able to find a new athletic director, Josh LaRush, and, and it's going really well, he's intuitive, I, Corey Juckett and myself have been helping him along the way just to get started, but Toby, I, I think you would agree.
Yeah, he's doing a great job.
Good, because see, when, until I saw that, I thought, uh, the Swanton Rec was doing it, and then I saw that, that's, that's a good start.
Yeah, so that's really short and sweet and.
Very good, thank you, thank you, Derek. And thank you for making sure that all happened tonight, in terms of everybody coming, who's there, it was very helpful.
Those ladies are just incredible.
They're stars, they are.
We should put in the minutes that they did, if you don't mind, just, you know, kudos to people who came and talked to us today and everything they've accomplished.
You do a nice job.
Thank you, Tara. And now it's our superintendent's report.
So I hope you were able to take a look at the newsletter, um, format, I'm going to be, unless people say they hate it, then I'd be happy to take that feedback and shift it. My thought is that I will have reports out from different departments in central office, talk about things that are happening across um, and at the SU meeting, uh, if any of them are in attendance, they could give a little presentation there. Um, but Lake Dina, I'm not gonna read it to you, but I have a few things that I wanna highlight and then I'm happy to take any questions, um, as well. Uh, I first wanna point out that there, of course, was a regional meeting and apparently you got a new role in that regional school board association.
I done, I done for a couple of years, but I got re-elected there.
Yeah. So, um, uh, but the annual conference for Vermont School Board Association in Lake Maury is coming up, October eighteenth and nineteenth, and, uh, it's always a very good conference, I will be there.
I'm gonna register stick one of these days before October first, so I get that special break.
Special break, and, uh, it's really about equity and excellence, again, continuing that theme that we've had across the state. Uh, and there'll be a lot of learning from, uh, other school districts and from each other about, uh, practices and many of which, uh, we're doing here, like restorative practices and working, um, on informing our schools around, uh, becoming resilient schools for our children who've experienced trauma. So if any board member would like to attend, uh, please contact Purit and she can register you. Um, and, uh, the school district supports board members who are able to go, I know it's, you know, you have to take a day off work or, you know, but, uh, it, it really can be a very productive time.
I went one year, it's, it's, it's quite a conference.
Did you stay overnight?
Overnight, Mary Wood and I went.
Lake Maury is beautiful most of the time.
And it's a great two-day conference, but if you can only spare one day, come Thursday.
Yep. I wanted to also do just a brief, uh, piece on technology, you may have noticed our Franklin Northwest SU website um, crashed and, uh, I, I sent an email out to you in case you got any feedback from community members. But we had been planning on porting over the website to a better platform anyway, um, so that it would be more usable, that it would be something anyone, uh, who works in central office, who had information to, to update, could do easily rather than waiting for an individual to do it. Uh, and then, uh, technical issues occurred and the whole thing sort of disappeared unexpectedly. And, uh, I, I really wanna thank Rusty and, uh, Robert Jarvis for just, you know, Rusty just loves web design, so, uh, uh, they spent a lot of hours making sure those board minutes were up there, even though it may not have looked pretty and it, it's starting to look prettier, but it's, it's not where we want it to be yet, but the, uh, they worked really tirelessly to make sure that the information we're obliged to have up was up there. And, uh, I appreciated that, 'cause it was right as school was opening that this was happening, so it wasn't a great time. Uh, wanna also talk, just the first day of school here was just spectacular and I was so pleased to be invited and, uh, Dina just did a tremendous job organizing all of those administrators and board members to come, uh, you know, it was great to see all of the former principals and, um, the children were amazing, standing there patiently.
They were the stars, other than.
They really were.
Than some of the adults.
That it was one, and then the half, the, the part in the cafeteria where people were sharing stories, uh, and Jeff talking about the basket and the open, I just thought that was lovely, so. It was a wonderful event and I was so pleased to be, uh, invited to be a part of it.
And the board for the flowers too, those were beautiful, very thoughtful, thank you.
Well, well, it was, was a lot of work and it showed.
A lot of work, you probably could call those flowers going by the door.
I know. Thank you for doing it, Dawn, it was appreciated.
And I, I do wanna say that during the in-service time, I was able to spend a morning here, um, with the teachers doing some professional learning with Joel Van Len in their resilient schools and it was just a pleasure to be with the staff and learn from them and they were just delightful and let me sit with them and everything. First they were, who are you? But it was, they were very welcoming and it was, it was just very rich professional development.
I was really appreciated it, yeah.
Well, it's, it was.
I found that type of teachers, you know, they like to get to know their instructors outside the building.
And, and we had great conversations, um, as all the tables were having conversations about the, um, whatever topic Joel was having us discuss, uh, uh, it was, it was a great opportunity to really sort of learn a little bit about um, the classrooms, I, I was with fifth and sixth grade teachers, it was great. Um, I think the last thing I want, wanna highlight and you will hear more about is, uh, the fact that we're gonna be having these integrated field reviews and that's a way that this agency of ed is going to be assessing schools, um, in, in a qualitative way. So, uh, we'll still have our aspect scores and how, how our children perform, uh, there. But we're also being measured with artifacts and I believe interviews, um, on how we are meeting different aspects of the educational quality standards. So next week, um, Justina will be with me and a team, right?
No, no, not, no.
No, it was Deb.
Deb Boucher and Jess.
I'm looking at all the names, but I don't have my glasses on. Yes, so we will have a team from every school, a couple of folks from every school and central office and, and next week we'll be learning about how we gather the information and, and, uh, give the information and then our opinions and reflections on it to the agency of ed and they will turn around and give schools a report that will include commendations and recommendations. Um, and, uh, so we'll be sort of deployed to different community schools. Um, it would, it won't be just Franklin Northwest people all going to Milton, but a combination of us from all of the schools going. Um, and then October twenty-fifth will be the visit to our supervisory union and so teams will be in all of our schools in the central office.
We remind us of that, I'd like to just kinda just stop by.
Yeah.
Dina, you probably, the early, early, the teaching career, there used to be something called school approval visits.
Yeah, yeah.
And a lot of the teachers, John, you may have been on a site visits.
Site visits, it, it was, you know, they're looking for certain things and criteria, but I think for people who are on those visits, it's always intriguing to go and visit other schools and see how they're doing things, so it's, it's a benefit too. I think we have a really good team put together.
We do, and, and I'm looking forward to seeing, um, what other schools are doing. Um, but it's also an opportunity for us to show off.
Sure.
Um, and, and show the best of what we're doing, so, of course, everybody will be trying to show off. We'll see, yes, yeah.
Well, thank you, I liked your newsletter.
Yes.
Is it a lot of work done for you?
No, well, I, and I wanna be transparent about it, I asked the folks to give me some information and then I work with it. Koshia gave me like five pages, I had to cut it down. So it's, it's a balance of, of their giving me information and then I'm, I'm writing some of it as well, so it's, it's it's a combination, yeah.
Thank you.
So, only other thing that's not on the newsletter, but I did want to, um, speak, it's related to the, um, Vermont School Board Association meeting, that same week, there will be, uh, VIHI, which is the Educational Health Initiative Board, and, um, they have votes and, uh, it was suggested to me that you may want me to be your proxy, in case there are any votes there and you want me to attend on your behalf, since I will be there, Dawn's not sure whether he's gonna be there.
The VSBA end of conference on Thursday is, the end of it is the VSBA annual meeting, which I will be at, vote, whatever, whatever. But VIHI is the next morning and I'm not sure, I can play it that close, vote that meeting and get to the airport to go, or I need to go, so.
That's a good idea, you definitely should have someone.
Yeah, we should.
Do we need to vote on it?
You would need to vote to authorize me to be your, to authorize me to be your proxy for dental and health insurance votes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
John seconded, any discussion?
I, I will tell you that, I guess every year people would say that it's important to have a vote at VIHI, but this is even more important here because the membership of the board is changing again. Uh, when I say membership, uh, the, the organizations that are represented.
Yes.
Uh, NBA and teachers, and the teachers and also the, uh, school boards. I think the same people are probably going to fill those slots, one of them is the business manager at your former district.
Yes.
I think she's going to continue.
Oh, good, she's very good at representing education.
But it's important that, uh, the voices are heard, I don't think there's anybody that's gonna try to hijack the process, but it's become a little more controversial than it was in the first twenty years and now it's, it's, uh.
I was a proxy at the one where they changed the makeup.
That was awful.
It was awful, so.
So you are, okay, so any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, uh, having Julie be our, or proxy, so, I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you are our proxy.
Uh, Dawn made the decision.
Dawn and John. Dawn and John. Okay, yes, I have, thank you.
You got it right.
Okay, thank you, anything else in that section? Okay, so our next order, business is old business, oh goodness, Act forty-six update.
Boy, there's a lot, um, do you wanna talk about the SU meeting and the letter or?
Oh, yeah, uh, I can talk about the SU meeting or, yeah.
I wasn't there.
Oh, okay, the SU meeting, we talked a little bit about Act forty-six and, um, Franklin has a path that their town is pursuing and so it was discussed at the board meeting as to what they were doing and you might have been reading it in the papers or on Vermont Digger or anything. But it looks like, uh, they have cho- chosen, uh, they, uh.
Is that today's?
It's today's.
I haven't even read it. I hadn't read that one yet, so it's about a couple of things, it's about what Franklin's gonna do in terms of the Northwest Supervisory Union, but it's also about what Franklin's gonna do in terms of this lawsuit. And that involves us too, because they talked about, first they talked about the lawsuit and the lawsuit that they want to go against the state, we, for the, the, um, board for doing this, is it S, is it Department of Education or the board?
I believe it's the State Board of Education.
State Board of Education, yeah.
It's in there, it's in there.
And we don't know exactly what the class action lawsuit will be against. Right now, they're just looking for boards to sign on as potential plaintiffs. And all they have done now is do a warning of a coming lawsuit and a hold, a public records hold. So, you know, don't destroy any records. Be prepared. We're going to ask for them. So it will only come about when the state board makes its decision. And then those schools that have signed on as plaintiffs, if they have been told they have to merge, they would go forward. If they are told they don't have to merge, then they would withdraw.
Okay. So it sounded to me though that if you make a commitment, it's not like you're saying, "Well, we'll see if we can pay." I think you're making a commitment to be part of it and to pay between three and $5,000. So, or maybe even six. So the question was for us to go back to our boards and ask if the board wanted to be part of a lawsuit.
I can give a little bit more information around that because we're sort of jumping right into it. The, not all of the school, many of the school boards have considered, but only Franklin has made a motion and voted to join and sign on. There are, it's one of those things where it's unknown. So you don't, if you don't have a community that is saying to you, you know, "Boy, you really have to do this thing," it's difficult to sign on to an unknown perhaps commitment of funds.
Yes.
So, however, I think it's definitely fair to say that the community that are choosing to sign on are really either, they're hoping for an injunction. And without seeing the lawsuit yet, it's hard to know. I cannot imagine in conversations I've had with school attorneys, I can't imagine that there would be an injunction that would only affect the communities that have signed on because all of those communities are supposed to be joining other entities. So, it would be likely that any injunction, should one be granted, affect all of the forced mergers. So that's part of the landscape of.
Because that's what the lawsuit is.
It's to stop the merger. I believe, I would expect it would be a constitutional argument about the, because the Agency of Education and the State Board of Education have been granted authority to do these things by the legislature. So the argument would likely be one about the legislative overreach in granting that authority. So, but we don't know what it is yet.
That makes it really hard to try. Because, you know, just from my perspective, from being on Act 46 and stuff, we have been very supportive of all our partners in this Northwest Supervisory Union. Because, you know, it's important to respect everybody and work collaboratively together regardless of what we do. And so, part of it would say, "Well then, yes, we should help support them in this lawsuit." But if you think about Swanton, the voters, I'm not so sure they would say support it since there's really no drawbacks to Swanton otherwise. I mean, there are some, obviously, but not as severe. But then the other thing that tended to happen, for me anyway, was that Franklin's talking about turning into a private school. So they won't even be part of our supervisory union. Which to me says, "Okay, Ben, all for one and one for all," isn't really happening. And so given that, I can't really imagine that we'd want to put our taxpayers to commit to paying certain, some money.
And how is that going to look to the Department of Ed with our proposal that we're not all united if Franklin is going to pull out considering, I mean, isn't that?
Well, I want to go through a couple of things that are happening.
I'll turn everything.
If that's okay.
No, no, no.
One thing that we did do is we created a letter from the supervisory union that speaks to the state board and asks them to give our AGS a look with recommendations. Because the last state board meeting, one of the state board members spoke to the fact that they could grant or approve with recommendations for change. Sort of in between besides just take it as is or just say no. So, you know, I can't, I think it may have been. So, we, I drafted a letter and the board gave me a little feedback and board chairs have been signing that. And that really was from the unified perspective. Since then, I've written a specific letter that is essentially, begins and ends the same way, but has a school district specific middle to it. So that there's a letter from Franklin and a letter from Highgate and a letter from Sheldon because they did have some different topics. But they also speak, they're all about wanting that AGS approved with recommendations, some specific town reasons why they would like that, but that they're committed to being a unified district in the alternate governance structure. So, that's something that I have done. As, that's one avenue of fight is to get the state board to advocate at the state board level. The school closure vote that will be happening in Franklin on October 2nd, that is based on a community petition. And community petitions when, it's, right now, there's some, there's a court case actually about whether you can ignore community petitions or not. And right now, the law really shows that we have to make a vote. You have 5% of the community petitions for a vote that you really need to warn it. So, there will be an informational hearing, the community petition to give all assets to the town and to, all school assets to the town. And the other is to become a non-operating school district with the idea of becoming an independent school. But that's a whole other process that takes a year and a half to do that is not anything that the school board could have anything to do with. So it really would be those two items as an option. I don't know. I don't really have a feeling that the community has a big, I think they're a little nervous about that.
Yeah, I think that.
And since that vote had to happen, Franklin actually, the board wanted to give its athletic field to the rec department and to the town because actually the town's the one that uses it. So they added that on as well. But just so nobody's confused if anybody's watching this. So that is a path that some community members have asked for a vote on. And then the third path is to enter litigation. And the board unanimously voted to enter litigation hoping that either an injunction will buy time so that we can continue to advocate to politicians and other dignitaries.
Franklin board.
Franklin.
Okay, not the SU board.
No, I'm sorry. Last night.
Oh, last night.
The, they voted to join that litigation as potential plaintiffs, hoping that an injunction would delay the process long enough to then maybe advocacy in the legislature, a bill could amend or change Act 46 and 49. Or the argument would win and they wouldn't have to merge. So those are the three sort of approaches. And Franklin appears to be taking all of the approaches at once, hoping that anything happens.
So if they, if they vote, let's say on the 3rd, if the town says, "Yes, we want to be an independent school," at that point, are they going to, are they going to wait? Are they going to start any of that process? Are they going to wait until the state decides whether we're going to merge? Or are they going to tell the state, "No, we don't want to be a part of merging. We want to do an independent"?
They just came out with something about the timing with that, that they can't do it.
The opinion of the, this is turning into a Franklin informational hearing, isn't it? The Agency of Ed's attorneys and have a position, obviously, on this. Their position is that they've been directed by the legislature to redesign school districts based on their current entities. So that it doesn't matter if you have a vote, we're going to merge you or not merge you based on what you are now. These petitions actually are calling for a change in operation in 2020. And we can't change the wording of the petitions anyway. It's, you know, you have to accept the petitions as given to you. So, I don't know what that would mean and, you know, I don't, I don't want to spend Swanton time talking about Franklin, but I do think it's relevant.
How we vote on this.
Absolutely.
Whether I'm going to decide whether I'm going to be part of this.
To be part of that. What are your thoughts on it? Do we want to take a vote and then have a discussion?
So my recommendation is we get a motion on the table before we talk about it.
Yeah, let's do it.
Monks or board. That would be my feeling.
So why don't we get a motion?
Well, because, because in the realm of possibilities is tabling it. I don't like us as a motion. I personally don't think we should be, I'm really curious on how Franklin's vote is going to be on October 2nd and 3rd. I don't see why we should be hurrying to make a decision on this until we see how that outcome is. That's my initial inklings are. And I'm also curious, if they, if they do go independent, what does that mean to the MVU union? Because they're no longer a district and that union is between member districts.
Well, the petition references the Franklin Town School Board, which is the K6 school district. So it would not create a non-operating district for their 712 students. So.
But that district is based upon a union of districts, right?
That, the 712 children would be a part of a merged district should the state board.
They can't get out of that unless all the towns that are in it vote to let them out.
That, okay, that's kind of my question.
So they'd be half merged.
Right, okay.
Potentially. I mean, you know, there's all kinds of things.
I like the idea of waiting to see what the vote is.
Is there a deadline for signing on to the lawsuit?
The request, I mean, it's their deadline. It's not your deadline, right? They're requesting that schools get to them by September 27th. I would want to get the will of the board. If you really were seriously interested in pursuing this, I would recommend having an executive session with school attorney, you know, in arranging that, to have that discussion. It was, but committing, committing funds to have an attorney talk to you, I felt was premature.
I mean, so are you thinking, Toby, if, you know, depending on the outcome, if they vote, "Yes, we want to go independent," then we would be less apt to sign on?
I feel that the Swanton board is being pressured into making a decision about this lawsuit that I'm not so sure Swanton would have even entertained. You know, back when I started with the 706 early discussions, the Swanton board unanimously wanted to go a different way and pose a different question to our voters. For better or worse, we, our boards are not proportionally representative of our communities as a whole. So, we didn't have the influence to go the way that Swanton wanted to go. So, I don't think, and then we signed on to the AGS because we were required by law to do something. So, I don't think we were really, you know, we participated, we were active, we contributed. I think it was all good discussions, part of the AGS. I'm glad we did that. But now it's like a third level, now we want to sue. And I don't know if I'm prepared to go that way. So, those are my thoughts. But I do think we have it on the agenda as an actionable item. We could always action to table it. So, that's why I'm usually big on, "Let's get a motion on the table" before we talk too much about it. So I'm violating what I really think we should do right now because I think we should get something off the table. But I'm thinking out loud right now.
I thought you did have a motion. I thought you were saying that you would prefer to wait until after the October meeting in Franklin before we acted on it.
Yeah, so we could table it till our next meeting. That's the motion I'm leaning towards. And I think I'll make that motion to table our decision on joining that 46 lawsuit until, I don't want to say our next meeting because we might want to have a special meeting. So, I'm tabling motion until after the October 2nd vote in Franklin.
Any seconds?
I'll second that.
John seconded. We don't discuss, do we, when it's a motion like that? We just, we can still discuss? Okay. Any discussion?
I'm just not sure what, I don't, for me, it's not going to make a difference what that vote is. I know what my opinion on it is and will continue to be. So I'm just not sure what we gain from waiting. That's, that's my, my say.
See, I'm torn. I don't know whether to go with it or not. And I think I might feel, I might know after the Franklin vote. I don't know. I'm hoping that would help me decide, but.
I'm just not sure, basing our vote on what community members in a different community, I mean, my concern is for Swanton and for our kids and for our community. And doing what's best for our community. And I guess, for me, that's not going to, that's not going to change depending on what the people in Franklin want or do not want.
I'm kind of looking at whether we're unified altogether. I don't know.
But are we, are we being kind of like hurting toward?
Other communities have not, they have not made motions to join the lawsuit.
You mean, when you say that, you mean other members?
Other, other, other school districts. Other Franklin Northwest school districts that have met.
Have not.
Have not made motions.
But, but we're the only one who have met since Franklin's meeting last night?
Oh, no, this month.
Oh, wow.
Did Franklin vote to?
When was this meeting?
They voted last night though.
I'm pretty sure they did. Because that was requested by the Supervisory Union Board.
They discussed it with legal counsel.
And decided.
And decided not to have a vote on it.
And did not make motions.
Okay. Then let's wait.
Well, I, whether we vote it up or down, I think Toby's position is a good one. Because it is going to impact us. Because if, and maybe the community will come out unanimous again. But if you follow this, the state, the state board has said, or at least the legal counsel for the agency said, "Doesn't make any difference what you do, Franklin, North, towns up in the kingdom. You're still going to be merged." You know, the last Act 46 committee meeting, and I represented MVU, which will no longer have a board, so I guess I'm representing potential nobody. But I think that, I think this whole idea of closing your school and being an independent school, that people don't really understand all the ball. I was on the State Board of Ed and then in the Senate when Bennington did this. That is a lengthy, very demanding process. And it's even more demanding because we were on the State Board and I was back in the legislature. And we put in more hoops for you to jump through than Bennington did or North Bennington did. So, it's a lot of time and energy. And I know that some people are very passionate, but in the end, I think it's going to happen. So I would lean toward either doing nothing or passing a motion to wait to see what happens there. I think at the end of the day, we're going to be a merged board and kicking and screaming and a lot of energy, but it's going to happen.
That's kind of my gut feeling too.
The only hope is the legislature. If enough legislators, and some of them are campaigning on that they were going to change this, if enough of people get elected who believe that and follow through, then maybe move adjustments. But it's not going to be individual towns suing. But it's not going to be individual towns suing the state.
Okay.
I, I think it also, it also, um, you know, this might for better or worse. Uh, it, it doesn't say we're, um, out of, uh, we're, we're totally dismissing the lawsuit or not wanting to support our neighbors. It's just saying we want, w- w- we want it in an order that works for our community.
Yeah.
And.
We want all the information before we make a decision.
Right, because it is a lawsuit, we're spending taxpayers' money.
Right, we can't do that without more info. Good, okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the motion was to table it.
Table until after, after the October second vote.
We could just say table it.
Well, what my assumption would be if, if we feel that, that we need a special meeting after that, we, someone can call it. One of our board members can get, get the drum going or at our next meeting, we could talk about it if we need to.
Yeah, that's good. All, you've got the motion there, Tamara?
I've got a motion to wait, to table it until the Act forty-six lawsuit. Um, pretty much like we waited after October second for the vote in Franklin to see what's going to table it till at least then.
Yes.
Okay, and John seconded?
I seconded, yeah.
Oh, did, who's?
I did.
Who did? John did.
And we had our discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so it passed.
It's cheerful.
Uh, only if it's hybrid, what they told me.
Or she chooses to.
Well, I think, I, I think that came up earlier tonight, but, but I think Swanton, we typically, the, the, the SU is not like that, but typically we've always voted here.
Yep.
I'm not saying that we had to, but.
But only the board, to my knowledge, that does that is MVU's board. And that's because that's their practice.
They do, uh, the board chair does not vote.
The chair does not.
Oh, so you get to make the extra.
Yeah, so I voted to table it.
So we were four to one.
Okay, so thank you for that. Now we have another action, which you're going to talk about, right? Which is the, oh, just an update, sorry.
So, um, the, and I don't want to go into too much detail, um, but, uh, the property discussion that was held, uh, that we had last time, uh, is not going to happen. And if you want to talk more about it, I can do that in executive session.
The, uh, what we wanted, can you say that again?
We were discussing purchasing property.
Yes, yes.
And that offer doesn't exist any longer.
Uh, I think we do want to talk about that.
I think so, I'd like to.
That would be by thought in executive session.
Yeah. Which would be appropriate because it's regarding real estate purchase.
So we'll do that at the end though, right? Okay, so we're moving on. Megan?
Yes, um, so just really quickly, an update on the playground. Um, Debbie continues to be amazing in her work, um, and getting these donations. They've really started to roll in, um, with the in-service right before school started. Justina was able to sort of rally the troops and get, um, you know, folks, the teachers here excited. And, um, you know, we've continued that work with getting the donation information right on the website. Um, it's been shared, uh, through social media as well. Uh, most recently, I want to say a huge thank you to the Swanton Memorial United Methodist Church. They presented a nine thousand dollar donation on Sunday.
Wow.
Uh, which was so incredibly generous and we are so grateful for that. Um, at this point, we have raised over sixty thousand, um, toward our two hundred thousand dollar goal, which is.
It's, it's September. It's been amazing.
Wow.
So we're still working on sort of the sponsorship pieces, the buy a brick. Um, it's, we've mentioned it before, but it is our goal to have a hundred percent, uh, participation and support from the board. Uh, we've thrown around some ideas of, you know, whatever amount it may be, whether it's a dollar to whatever. Uh, every, every donation helps and having a hundred percent board participation, I think, sends a really important message to the community. Um, we don't have, as of yet, the donation levels that will qualify for, uh, the different sponsorship pieces. My initial thoughts was that we could do one of the bricks if, um, if we're able to have it, yeah, have it be from the school board. Um, so that's just something that we will come back to once we have those levels sort of distinguished. But just something to continue thinking about and that we've really got some great momentum. And I think everybody involved is feeling really positive, um, about how things are coming together. And just again, thank you to the community and Debbie especially for leading the charge.
So is our, will commitment work at this point or do you need the cash?
Um.
For the board?
I can think at this point, a commitment is good. Um, we, we definitely want to, Laura is sort of in charge of the spreadsheet of donations because, you know, we don't want to, I don't need to know how much anybody donates, um, just the fact that they have. So if you want to do it online through the platform, you can. Um, if you want to submit a check, you can. And essentially Laura will let us know, um, when it's a hundred percent per se, uh, participation. My thought at this point is that we wait until we find out what those levels are and then be able to have a conversation about whether or not we want and are able to do one of those.
I like it.
I can bring some donor envelopes to the next board, meaning if you want to do something individually too.
We'll have more information.
Mercenary.
The article, the messenger, two weeks ago was when Debbie, uh, spoke with the village trustees. And I don't think it might be, I don't know about what money was exchanged, but they certainly were, uh, verbally a hundred percent supportive. But I haven't heard anything about the town officials that we have, have had.
Um, I know that, yeah, in the meetings that Debbie has attended and went in as well, uh, they were a hundred percent in support as well. So right now, it's been, we've gotten nothing but positive feedback from, you know, the, the town and village.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for doing all that. Megan and Justina. Okay, so we are on the negotiations representative, is that?
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, let you know it's a negotiations year again with Act forty-six. We don't know what that's going to look like. However, uh, it, um, is that time of year. So I wanted to make sure that each board is thinking about, uh, who their representative will be toward negotiations.
Wow.
I nominate Mr. John Creighton.
Thank you.
Didn't we already do that?
You did that, said I would be on the.
I thought so.
It's a done deal.
Yeah.
I said that because I think when we talked about committees at the beginning of the year.
Yeah. Excellent. Julie, is it both support staff and teachers? Uh, it's just teachers this time unless, unless, uh, it has to happen because of merging, then we, we try and do all of it. So.
Enough that you guys doing the work, just, uh, budgeting all this stuff. You would have no idea how this negotiation fits in with the timeline with Act forty-six, right?
Will make a lot of difference actually, under an Act forty-six or not.
Because we negotiate for the whole.
You actually have done so much work to bring your, uh, salary schedules together to, and to have a, a fairly unified document. Um, that, uh, under Act forty-six, when you, um, when a new unified district is formed, uh, you need to negotiate until you get to an agreement. And if you don't, by the time the new entity begins, people bring their existing agreements together. In this case, it's one document. So it's, I, you know, I, I don't know that it's as urgent as if you all had separate agreements that were very different.
Makes sense. Okay, so future meeting dates, twenty-fourth and then the Northwest is the third. And we also tentatively talked about the January, but we're going to find out based on MVU, et cetera, to get back on that one. Okay, and then.
So I'll make, uh, if the chair will entertain a motion to enter executive session to talk about a real estate purchase by the district.
John seconded. John seconded. Okay, great. And do we want to invite Deana and Justina?
Yeah, sure.
You have mine.
You just want to find out you don't have a school property and you're going to start your school.
So if I just say discuss real estate issue, that's enough?
I think it's where prior knowledge might jump in.
It's definitely where, where prior knowledge would substantially disavow the one or more parties.
He's at.
It's on the.
It's on the agenda.
It's key and likely.
Yeah.
Uh, you might want to get a law book, Vermont statute law book. No, seriously, just for your own education, because sometimes these things come up. And if you, if you see this as a career position, it would be good to understand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.